The meeting is called to order. South Hampton Town Planning Board, Thursday, January 9th, 2020. The Secretary, Paul Rowe.
Chair LaFaro is absent, excused. Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board Member Blaney is absent. Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
And our counsel is with us, so we have a quorum. Very good. Would you please rise with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for accommodating our temporary headquarters. We hope to be back in our regular hearing rooms within the next couple of weeks. If you wish to enter comments as a record, please use a podium. State your name, and I don't know if there's a sign-in sheet there. Right, print your name on the sign-in sheet as well, and just when you're ready to speak. Or whatever. And any affiliation you may have, if you're representing a civic group or an organization and a joining neighbor, please state that as well. We have one announcement. The item number five on your agenda, 32 South Philip, has been rescheduled to February 13th. And that being said, we're going to go to our first hearing, which is South Hampton Volunteer Ambulance. Do we have the...
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. I think Phil usually... Okay, sure. Our newly appointed secretary. Our newly appointed... Our busted-up old secretary.
Same as the old one.
Okay. Notice of public hearing, please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January 9th, 2020, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled "Southampton Volunteer Ambulance." The site plan is for the construction of a building and accessory parking associated with a district ambulance service on a 1.4-acre parcel located in the HO zoning district located at 1256 North Sea Road, within the hamlet of North Sea, Suffolk County tax map number 90096-3, 3.1. By order of the Planning Board of the town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary. Very good. Who's representing the application? Good evening. Please use a podium, and also state your name and print your name.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mark Andreassi. I'm representing Ava Design, licensed professional engineer. I'm here to help address any planning board comments and questions on this particular application.
Could you please just give us a brief description of the project?
It's 1.45-acre site. It's 8,600 square feet is the footprint, which represents 13.63 FAR. It's a single-story building. It does have a basement of 1,914 square feet. The site basically, all drainage will be self-contained. Lighting will be all self-contained on the site. We received comments from the planning department that we're in the process of working on right now with revisions.
What's the basement going to be used for?
Storage.
Just...
And mechanicals.
Dry storage?
And mechanicals, yes. And with me tonight is John Van Velce, the architect. He can answer any questions regarding the building. Yes, sir.
About what percent of the building is used for storage of equipment, rigs, et cetera?
Oh, go ahead, John. There's a four-bay truck garage area, and there's approximately 6,000 square feet of administration building, which houses the offices, the training room. The remaining 2,400 is the truck bay areas.
Are there going to be sleeping facilities?
There's two bunk rooms, small bunk rooms for the facility, yes.
Great. You did get some correspondence from the North Sea Civic Association?
Yes, we did. We have addressed that. We have a rendering which depicts the, hopefully, the changes that they were requesting. The original submittal that was made to the planning board was for a metal panel type of building. What we plan to do, the first major thing, is that we have increased the pitch of the roof, which was one of their issues, from five to 12, to seven-on-12.
So seven-on-12, okay.
Right, which is roughly 30 degrees, and also enhances the ability to put solar panels on a building, which was another question that they had, which we already had in our project. We have planned on putting solar panels on the southerlymost roof. We have approximately 3,400 square feet available to do that, so that should be a good net for solar panels. In addition, we raised the masonry skirt that was on the original plan up to three foot six, and are planning on now putting hardy plank vertical siding, horizontal siding, on the front of the building and wrapping it 20 feet down the sides.
Terrific. It's going to be awesome. Further questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anything from the public which is to be heard on the Southampton Ambulance Board? Yes?
I was going to ask about some of the things before I ask the question.
Mark Matthews. I live in North Sea, and I spoke at the town board meeting when it was presented a couple weeks ago, and I'm grateful that they listened, and I think the improvements shown here are just that, they're real improvements, so I'm appreciative.
Mark, could you tell us your profession while you're there?
Yeah, I'm an architect.
You're an architect.
Do you accept... Sir, so you're in favor of it then?
I am in favor of... I've always been in favor of the ambulance expansion. Make no doubt about that, but I'm grateful with the improvements that have been made, and I think it's going to be good.
Any further additional comments? Yes, please use a podium.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is Sophie Nedell.
Could you speak into the mic so we could hear you, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Sophie Nedell, and my husband and my property are abutting, the lot in question, which is to house the new ambulance volunteer service. And I received plans from the deputy attorney, Kathleen Murray, town attorney, and I just have some concerns and questions. What's not clear is the buffer zone in the back of the property, because when I look at this, it says 30 feet and then 50 feet. So if I turn over to it, it's 80 feet of buffer zone, which does not make sense.
Well, what is a rear yard setback?
Right. They both say rear yard setback. 30 feet and then 50 on my copy of the...
Well, once we have, and maybe Jackie can help us with this, once we get to the end of the pavement, I don't think there's any reason... It's wooded there now, right?
It is wooded. The whole lot is wooded, yes.
I don't think there's any reason to do additional clearing unless the ambulance... I think the goal is to keep it all wooded back there.
Okay, but what's the buffer zone, actually? That's my question. How many feet is it?
It's a required 50-foot transitional yard, because you guys are residential.
You're not on mic, Jackie. You're not on mic.
I can answer that. There's a 50-foot required transitional yard, and in fact, as a condition of the ZBA approval, it's pursuant to Ms. Nedell's request, there will be a vegetated buffer area there, but it's a 50-foot transitional yard because it's going from HO to residential.
Okay, so 50-feet buffer.
50-foot, yeah.
50-foot buffer, okay, all right. My other question was, what is going to happen to the fact that the vet lot is on an incline? The back of it is higher than the front.
Well, they have to keep all their drainage on site, so they have a whole drainage plan with leaching pools and dry wells for the roof runoff. In other words, every drop of water coming off that park lot of that building is going to have to be contained. None of it's going to be able to leave the site.
Okay. My question is, from the actual constructed either sidewalk or road behind the building, how are they going to end the slope of that 50-foot buffer? Is it...
Okay, if you could just use the mic, because we're not picking you up otherwise. I apologize.
So if I could help you a little bit here. So she's concerned mostly about that sloping section on the back of the property, which is approximately 50 feet, which will be left in its vegetated state, okay? After that, we step into the driveway section, and we happen to gain, you know, because of the elevation of the building we set, we have minimal disturbance against that slope, so we'll be doing like a simple one-on-three restoration slope, and that will all be planted with arborvitae.
Okay, so there won't be any erosion there?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
And runoff, so...
Right.
That is correct. No runoff. Everything will be self-contained.
Self-contained, yep.
And I believe, do you also have to do a SWIP for this project?
SWIP, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Also, I understand the building itself is going to be over 8,000 square feet?
8,600.
Is that correct?
8,600, yeah.
Okay, that sounds like it's pretty big. Is there a need for such a huge building?
I would have to say I believe so, basically, for the growth of the community and where they're working right now, there certainly won't have a that building.
Okay, so has there been a previous study to determine the need for that kind of size?
Have you found a... Yeah, sure. Just use a podium if you could. Typically, there are building committees that draft these proposals.
Yes, for the last four years, actually, this project has been ongoing for four years, which you probably are somewhat aware of, but I did work very closely with John, and we visited three of the sites, other existing facilities, analyzed what they have now, what they felt their needs would be. I believe we added one additional truck bay for future expansion, and as you can see from the floor plan, the difference between this building and the other existing facility is that we now have a training room that's important to them. Gave them more of a little lounge area. There's a bunk room, you know, yeah, so it's, you know, certainly, I think, meets their needs for now and the immediate future.
Okay. Also, I saw in the plans, there will be a kitchen.
Yes.
And a dumping area towards the back, I think, of a building?
For the dumpster.
There's a dumpster area.
So how about possible rodents and vermin, you know?
That has to be, by code, that has to be enclosed. It has to be fenced and everything else.
Okay, how about medical waste also?
I don't know.
What happens to those, you know...
There's a whole disposal protocol for medical waste. I'm assuming you cannot throw that into a regular... No, the chief is over here shaking his head.
Okay, what do you do with it?
John Christian, Chairman of the ambulance. It's separated, and it's put in special bags, and then it's taken away. It's not put in with the actual letter. We actually are very receptive of actually taking recyclables. We have a separate bin for that, our household garbage, our cardboard, so we do the same thing as most of our residents. And I'd like to say, ma'am, that on behalf of the Town of Southampton Ambulance, we are very grateful of the community's support, and the town, and the planning board, and the town board, and everyone that's been a part of this. You know, for the years that I've been in there, it's been very challenging to do our services with the condition of the building, and we've still been 100% committed regardless of what's come upon us. So this is going to be a big upgrade for us. It's going to really help, especially our paramedics, because they work sometimes, right, you know, they work 12-hour shifts, 24-hour shifts. They have no place to have a place of their own, so, you know, we're not adding any creature comforts, we're just adding the necessities that we need to run our ambulance, so.
Also, there's a lot of traffic now on North Sea Road, and all the trucks and...
So what we've done is, we stayed ahead of that curve, and we have asked for a light so that it would stop the traffic when we do proceed with a call, so.
Thank you. And the other question, the last question I have really, is, it was mentioned in the paperwork that the project would cost $3,500,000. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That seems to be a lot.
The town is bound by prevailing wage rates, but that is the estimate that the town board has approved.
Yeah, okay, so eventually taxes will be raised, I assume, to cover for that cost.
Well, the tax impact, there will be an increase in the tax district. Whether or not you realize that as a taxpayer hasn't been determined yet, because assessments have changed, so the levy might be different than the actual tax impact, but yes, the town board authorized the increase in that special taxing district about a month ago.
Okay, I see. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Nedell. Next speaker, yes, please use a podium.
Barbara Fair, North Sea. I want to express my appreciation for the attention that was given to our comments at the town board meeting concerning the design of the building. I do feel that aesthetically, it is much more in keeping with what we would like to see in North Sea as one of the two principal public buildings in our hamlet. I do have one question concerning the readiness of the property for solar. I understand that there is a 3,500-square-foot roof south facing that is suitable for that purpose, but there is more to it than that to be ready for solar. So my question to the builder and designer is whether the requisite connections are being planned for, and we'll be able to move forward with that once money was available to put in solar panels.
Can I do an answer for you? Just state your name.
Jay Andreassi. I'm the construction manager representing AVA. Yes, so solar is very important to us, and very important to the core. What we did was, from early on, we designed the building to adapt to solar. We did not think we were going to have enough money in the budget to do solar right off. We thought we would do it in the future, but the town was very considerate, and the original budget, which I put together at $3 million, actually expanded to 3.5. Part of that increase included solar. So we are ready to go with solar right from the get-go, and everything will be hooked up, transfer switches, everything that has to accommodate solar, we'll be ready to go, and the operating expense will be, it's amazing, you know, anyone who has solar at their home, you'll know, that it's just amazing what solar does for us. Unfortunately, in Long Island, New York State, we're way behind other parts of the country, but we're going to catch up, and we think that this will be a good example to set for the community.
Good to hear. I hope, and I guess I believe, that the design is going to accommodate the needs of the volunteer services for some point to the future, and to that, we need to understand the reason for the size of the building. I personally am not uncomfortable with it. I know some of my colleagues and neighbors do find it big, but I think, kind of, once it's done, it'll settle in visually, so I'm pleased with the outcome and the responsiveness of all concerned here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional speakers? Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Sorry, I should have mentioned it before, but I was wondering if, while, now that the roof is raised, it might be a good idea to rework the stair inside so that the second floor would be usable soon, whenever you need it, because not now, maybe 10 years, you're going to need it, so it could be changed now and make it easier.
Yes, ma'am? Please use a podium.
Hi, my name is Larissa Potapchak. I live in the North Sea area. If you'd allow me to read a letter from one of the neighbors that lives right near there, and I'll have some comments too, whatever you would prefer I do first. Our concerns in the neighborhood, especially in Little Fresh Pond, are why there needs to be this cement block of pure cement that is taking away permeable land where rainwater goes through. I live there, I work from home. I don't necessarily, I haven't seen the need for all of the extensive and expensive construction when they always have a drive. We really like the ambulance. They pretty much saved my mother last year. We like them, we believe they need to be there, but we just don't see the need for this big, monstrous building on land, which right now is used to take the rainwater and allow it to seep into the ground, as opposed to going to the road and also going to Little Fresh Pond, which is 350 feet away. So I ask of you, please also look at the secret review, because there are elements on that secret review which seem to me to be incomplete. For instance, one of them stated, is there going to be an impact to the environment? Does not apply, no. What's the evidence that there's not going to be runoff? Please review the secret statements, and we're still looking to find out what the rationale is for the demand for this big expansion. We think maybe, considering the size of the Southampton ambulance area, a smaller location would be situated better elsewhere to have two levels of providing service to reduce the time it takes to go to a call. May I speak for Ivan Bard?
Sure.
Oh, sorry. Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. Somebody else needs to go while you find this? No. Okay, my name is Ivan, my neighbor's name is Ivan Bard, and he was unable to make it here today for this. He's very concerned, he lives in the area, and he is, he would prefer that another floor would be added to the current structure than cutting down an acre of virgin wood, which is on the side of Little Fresh Pond, and we feel is under attack from development in the area. There will be an impact on the fragile water body this proposed development will have, and to have an acre clearing approximately 300 feet from the water will bring in runoff from North Sea Road. The woods add filtration to the water. A small water body is a fragile ecosystem that needs protection as we face the deterioration of its health. Ivan applauds the brave men and women that volunteer to help our community and care for the sick. He is hopeful there can be an alternative to what is posing, what is proposed. With a new structure and the sale of the old one, the community is faced with more development that will have a serious impact on the health of the area. Something that also keeps people concerned is the light that is infringing in the area now, which would only be higher if this structure is expanded. Plus, there is an addition to, if there's issues in finding volunteers right now, it would only seem to be worse with the structure being so much bigger. I thank you very much for your consideration, and please have a chance to go through the environmental impact statements that was prepared in October.
Thank you for your comments. Additional speakers? In addition, there will be a written comment period of 30 days, so if some of your neighbors couldn't make it down this evening, you can email, or fax, or mail letters. All correspondence is read by the board and entered into the record. Okay, very good. We have a motion to close with a 30-day written comment period by Robin.
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor? I oppose extensions. We have five yes and two opt. Thank you for your attendance. We're going to move to 17 Enterprise Zone LLC. Do we have jurisdiction council?
We do.
Zuccarelli, are you up for reading?
This is short.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll have to show it.
[laughing]
Of course, sure, no problem. You can call me if you have any questions.
It's little.
This line is terrible.
You want mine?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Notice of public hearing, please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January 9th, 2020, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application titled 17 Enterprise Zone Drive. The application is for a 4,400-square-foot, one-story building for special trade contractors uses. On a vacant one-acre property situated in LI40 zoning district, aquifer protection overlay district, and central pine barrens compatible growth area located at 17 Enterprise Zone Drive in Flanders, Suffolk County, tax map number 900-141-1-9.23. By order of the Planning Board of the town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Very good, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Joshua Crensmen, and I am the owner of Crensmen Care Incorporated Landscape Company, and as you mentioned, I am looking to build a 4,400-square-foot morton building specifically for my landscape company. That building would be built on an acre of land at 17 Enterprise Zone Drive in Riverhead, New York.
Is there an elevation? Do we have one? We got the other map. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, John.
What colors are you going to be using? The color has not been determined as of yet.
I mean, you're going to have to make the decision, have you been to the architecture report?
I'm sorry, say that again. No.
You're going to have to nail down some colors before you finalize it.
The, what I'm leaning towards right now, what is planned currently is a light charcoal gray for the exterior of the building.
You'd probably like to break, you know, the roof different color than the sidewall. The other thing that jumps out is one of the ways to break up these, I understand you need these garage doors, but you could do a panel of glass sometimes, that breaks up the mass of the doors, different things.
Yes, the doors will have glass panels at a higher elevation towards the top of the door, about two-thirds of the way up. We are doing a stone wainscoting around about three-quarters of the building and we will be having a different, probably a darker gray roof than the exterior.
Yes, I say, just, when you get a chance, just revise the plan, showing the color, showing that glass on the door, different elements that you're planning. Of course, it's going to be well landscaped, so we don't have to worry about that.
Right.
It should be, it's in advertisements.
Yep. Further questions for the applicant? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on 17 Enterprise, 17 Enterprise in Flanders? Okay, we'll add a motion to closing the 10-day written comment period, 10 motion. Motion by Gloria, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, five yes and two absent, hang on to those other plans before the next application, Robin, you up for reading? State of Madeline Cuomo, council, do we have?
Yes.
And Robin is going to read.
This is for this one, this is for this one.
You're all good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Notice of public hearing, please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held with Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January 9th, 2020 at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the pre-application entitled State of Madeline Cuomo. The application consists of a standard plan with four lots for a three subdivision of four parcels with a total project area of 1.78 acres located on the south side of Montauk Highway, County Road 80 between Seashore Avenue and Ocean Avenue, situated in the R20 zoning district in the Hamlet of East Quah, Suffolk County Tax Map Number is 900-291-12569 and 10. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Welcome.
Is it on? Okay. Lisa Poyer, on behalf of the applicant, with InterScience Research Associates, 36 Nugent Street, Southampton, New York, 11968, represents the state of Madeline Cuomo. This application was before the planning board back in 2012, where it received a pre-application report at that time. There's four existing lots on the property right now, we're reconfiguring the lots to be a little bit better arrangement, there's quite, there's two of the lots are undersized, two of the, one lot is regulation size as per R20 zoning and then the fourth lot is oversized, so we're just trying to distribute the areas so that three lots then become conforming with one undersized lot. We've received a variance from the zoning board of appeals from the undersized lot to be a minimum area of 15,284,000 square feet, there will then be two 20,000-square-foot lots and then the remaining lot will be 22,197 square feet. We're just here to answer any questions that the board may have or anybody from the public on the subdivision.
So how far this will receive pre-application report?
It did receive pre-application approval from this board, it did go to Health Department and it kind of stalled there, so.
Do the Health Department approve?
We do not have Health Department, no, we are going to resurrect that application as well.
Do you have an improvement plan for Ocean Avenue or Seashore?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an improvement plan for the private roads that access the property, Seashore and Ocean?
As far as what, the driveways?
No, the roads, I believe they're dirt roads now, right?
They're partially paved, there's some potholes on them, I believe they're private roads.
Yeah, they're not town roads, do you have any plan to improve them? Or are you going to do it through 288?
They're proposing to do a water main extension along Ocean, being the point of that's the side that has more residential properties attached to it. If you go down Seashore, it's adjacent to Tony's Asian Fusion and they're already connected to public water along Montauk Highway, so the applicant has agreed to do it along Ocean where it would benefit the neighbors across the street as well, so probably with that whole development where they'll be tearing up the road, there'll probably be some improvements made to the road. And access would be restricted to either Ocean Avenue or Seashore, that way there's no additional curb cuts onto Montauk Highway.
And the zoning here is R20?
Yes.
R20.
This was the old underground site.
Yeah.
And that was demolished.
These roads are ten or private?
They're private.
Private, all right, because...
They're going to have to do improvement.
They'll have to go to road review.
I'm almost thinking Ocean will do the improvements since the water, once you put those water mains in, you're going to have to stabilize and you might as well do the improvements then you're out of road reviews. Seashore, we could probably do through 288.
Okay.
Further questions for the applicant? Thank you, Lisa, is there anyone who wishes to be heard on the State of Madeline Cuomo? Is this pre-application? Close with the 10-day written comment period, all in motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Robin, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, five yes, two absent.
Thank you.
Gloria, are you up for reading?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to, the last item is 747 Flanders Road and this is a special exception application.
We have noticed.
We have noticed and Gloria is going to read.
I need something to read from.
We will, it's on its way.
Please take notice of a public hearing, please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January 9th, 2020 at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan special exception application entitled 747 Flanders Road. The application, so, we need lights in here, the application is for the construction of a single-family residence, special exception approval required by planning board on a 5,000-square-foot parcel located in the OD zoning district, written within the aquifer protection overlay district, the Central Pine Barrens compatible growth area and within the WQI high priority area situated at 747 Flanders Road, Hamlet of Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900.144.1-7. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Hi, good evening, my name is Rusi Mitov and I'm owner of the property at 747 Flanders Road and I like to build a small house, two-story house, approximately 1400 square feet house for my son and the property is too small to build a office. I know it's an office district, but if you cannot build an office, at least you can use that property for something, then stayed more than 30 years, I'm in that area, it's still dumpster. I like to clean up and make something, I want to feel more property in that area and I tried to clean up last 15, 20 years, I think they look much better than before. If you have any question, I'd love to answer.
I don't know if this is an old picture, but there seems to be a house.
No house.
Because there's nothing, this is gone.
No, that is the, somebody was built like a shed in the middle of the boat property.
And they're gone.
It's gone, I spoke with my lawyer, he said it's illegal, they don't have any paper for that, somebody put between the two properties something, we have to knock it down, it's illegal building your property and I demo and still waiting for it.
Pretty cut and dry.
Excuse me?
Pretty cut and dry, did you print your name on the sheet?
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, you're showing, well, I don't know what it is, but with the proposed house, it looks like there's three other small structures, what are those?
This is a part, this is a part of some barbecue left over there, that's what they, the survey saw in the property, but everything going to be cleaned up, some brick from something.
Those are, these are, that's part of the septic. Three? Three pools with two more proposed? That could be an IA.
No, that's the septic tank, in the front is the septic tank and the back is the drainage from the roof. Used to have some...
You have three septic, you have three septic tanks?
No, actually going to be new system.
The IA system?
Yes, it's going to be new system, not going to be this system.
They're closer to the front, if you see in the area.
Yeah, going to be new system. I spoke with the building inspector and...
Oh, yeah, on the right side of the area, see that?
Yeah.
It's very low groundwater, we are so... Okay, thank you, here are no comments, I'll let you close with a 10-day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Robin, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, five yes, two absent, we have a motion to adjourn by Phil.
Yes.
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli, we are adjourned.